Good evening. It is April 23rd, 2025 at 5:30 PM. This is a meeting of the Capitol Facilities Committee. Present tonight on the committee is Liz Boucher, Pam Walsh, Barb Higgins, and myself, Jim Richards. In addition, we have Superintendent Kathleen Murphy, Business Administrator Jack Dunn, Facilities Administrator Matt Cashman, and Terry Wolf, who is our Communications Director. Tonight, we will be covering a couple of items, first of which is the discussion of an owner-project manager for our middle school construction project. So, how would you like to handle it, Superintendent? Do you want me to talk about it?
Let me just go over some materials that you have in your packet. So, in addition to the agenda for tonight, I, we put in a job description because, you know, it's for everyone. I mean, it varies from place to place, and people have various definitions of it. So, we thought, we'll give you an idea. This is, this is not carved in stone. This is just a draft. It's ideas that we, that we formulated. So, that's in there. We also put in the ED rules, 321, which is all about the owner-project manager, which is part of those new rules. And the last document that we have in your packet is just a list, and this is posted on the, the website, the Department of Ed website, and it lists the folks that do this work as owners-project managers. And you can see the different companies that do it and the projects that they've done. And this is a document, again, that the Department of Ed keeps up for everyone. So, I thought it was important that you have those things for you. We can spend a little time reviewing those. But certainly, the OPM has come up a number of times. The board has been interested in at least discussing it. What is it, what does that mean? What does it look like? Matt, as, as you know, was the OPM for the elementary school projects 10, 12 years ago. And so, Matt certainly understands the, the demands of the position. And, and again, Jack reminded me this morning that, that when we talked early on with the Department of Ed, they agreed because of Matt's experiences and his role in the elementary projects, that Matt suited, in their eyes, the definition of an OPM. So, just so you have a brief overview of where we're at, and I thought tonight was kind of give the board a chance to talk about it and discuss it amongst yourselves as a, as a board and try, and give us some direction, so.
I agree. First thing I just wanted to go through is we have the rules for, for the Department of Education with regards to owner-project managers. I did read through there, and certainly, we can appoint someone, an individual currently employed, to by the district. But if we choose not to do that, I don't see any guidance here as to any restrictions on how we would have to hire it. Do we interview and hire? Do we put out to bid? Do we issue an RFP? Matt or Jack, what's our appropriate?
Yeah, I actually have hired an OPM in a project that I worked on. So, you put out an RFP, a request for proposals, and you put it out on the street, right, and get folks to apply. And then, you know, like you did with the architect, as well as the, the building-construction group, you put a committee together, folks. We have a lot of folks that have been really interested in the project, and so you'd create a, a committee and have the committee interview those folks, make some recommendations. But ultimately, the board is the decision-making body that decides yes or no on a particular OPM. But that's how it works.
So, and just for anyone watching and for our own benefit here, I would expect that the procedure would be for this committee to recommend that the board hire and put out an RFP and hire a owner's project manager directing the president and the executive committee to put that together, since I believe it's something that comes from the full board, not necessarily from just this committee. And then, follow through on that. I guess they would create that committee that would review and evaluate. I would assume that either we or the board would put together the criteria for scoring and evaluating that, I would assume, and then direct a committee to, to do that.
Yeah, and all of the groups and this particular project here that we had, we've had rubric, a rubric. So, when we had certain questions, we, the committee, the folks that served on that, those interview committees, used that to kind of score based on criteria that was established prior to the folks coming in. And that was a great tool to use for discussion. And again, we had some, you know, we had engineers on this. We had a board member on it. It was, it was a robust builders. So, it was a great group, very, you know, a variety of backgrounds, which was nice.
Excellent. I think, you know, the job description here is good. I'd look for any discussion from the board as to whether we would think that the building committee would put together that scoring rubric, or would the?
You know.
Would we do it, or whom?
I think the, we could certainly ask for input from the building committee. I think ultimately, it would, it would probably be the review committee and the board who would just determine the final rubric and scoring. I would.
I would look to Matt for input. I don't, I, I have participated in reviews and, and in scoring. However, I would probably defer to someone with more construction experience with regards to putting together the, the criteria for evaluation.
And I'm sure they would give us a great draft that we could bring to others. You know, and I'm open to the idea. I think Matt would do a great job, as he did on the elementary school. I think I am concerned about some of the cost estimates that we heard. So, you know, I would be happy to go forward and do an RFP and then see what the bids are and whether, you know, we think, and the building committee thinks that the costs, potential cost savings equals the cost of adding another layer to the project.
Well, we need to, I feel that based on this, the rules that we need to add a, a project manager, but I agree with you. I think we should put out an RFP. And just because we get responses doesn't mean that we have to accept those. The board may direct the superintendent to have Mr. Cashman be our OPM, although that may not be the ideal situation from his other responsibilities. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, and, and Matt and I have had those discussions because it's a big project, and I think everyone recognizes that. But with that said, you, the board, last year, set aside some funding so that Matt would have a manager, somebody that could do the day-to-day kinds of things that Matt often is running around when we have issues that come up, whether it's plumbing, electrical, whatever those issues are. So, Brian has been a great addition to the team and has helped Matt out. But Matt takes, takes time right now to help him and mentor him, and so he understands the breadth of needs in the, in the district. But you did do that last year in your budget.
And we did it in anticipation of Matt serving as the OPM.
Next step, are we looking to direct the administration to put together, you know, a RFP? Are we looking for us as a committee to recommend this to the board, or probably both? I don't know.
Well, you always run your recommendations through the full board. So, we could do that at the May meeting. If, if, whatever decision you make tonight is a recommendation to the full board, I would think that May would be ideal time for you to make that, that, that motion and then let the remainder of the board, you know, give you some feedback and go from there. And of course, we would do whatever we needed to do. We're accustomed to writing RFPs and putting that on the street, so, and, and develop the, the rubric that would, you know, to evaluate the effectiveness of a program.
I would assume that there would be representation from this committee on the evaluation committee as well.
I would hope so.
What do, what do the other committee members think with regards to recommending this to the board?
You know, I will move that we recommend to the board that we put in an RFP to get proposals for an alternative OPM.
Is that a second?
And I just want to stress "alternative" because there's been a lot of discussion that the rules require to have an OPM, and, and we know that, and that has been part of our plan the whole time. So, it, it wasn't that we weren't looking to have an OPM. We, we had a plan for an OPM, so, who has successfully been an OPM for this district?
Not, not, not at all. It certainly is within the rules, you know, in 321.29, Item D, it clearly states that it can be, you know, it certainly can be a member of our school district. It has been in the past. So, I have no, you know, I would have every confidence in Mr. Cashman if we so choose that. But I think we, I think we should go through with the, with recommending to the board. Ms. Boucher, do you have any input or any discussion items?
No, I agree. I mean, I do think Matt meets these qualifications that are clearly laid out in the rules, for anyone who's listening. And I, I think it, I think it is important that we put out an RFP, just so we have that on the books of, of what it would cost.
And, and we might decide it makes financial sense, and we might not. I mean, we got some early estimates that I think made the whole board say, oh, well, maybe not.
Yeah, a little, yes, there, there was a little concern. So, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to recommend?
Could we get a second to that?
Miss Higgins seconded that.
Must be a bad sign.
So, all those in favor of the motion to recommend to the board to put out an RFP, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That recommendation passes. Any, anything further on that particular topic?
I think just quickly, a little history. When, when some of these rules came into play, this was several years ago. My understanding from the prior school building aid director, she solicited input from us because they were going to require the OPM. I'm almost positive it was after the Unity School was built, because there was a lot of free and reduced activity that happened to build that school. And all we requested her, if you're going to require, we wanted an out, knowing what we had coming and the experience we had here in Concord. We did not want that to be mandated because we figured they probably wouldn't pay for it. And, you know, down in Massachusetts, which is where I think they're getting a lot of this, the 80/20, and that, that is absolutely required. You have to have it separate. But we asked for that out. So, that is why that out is in there, because we had requested it be in there.
Well, I think it makes absolute sense.
This is a long conversation. It's been going on for a long time. But we also have a lot more expertise and professional staff than a lot of smaller school districts kind of form.
We get it. Yeah. I think if we were to go to Mr. Cashman, we would be well-qualified. And we have someone well-qualified to, to manage the project, so, okay.
And this position, and this position represents your interests, this school district's. And, and not just overseeing architects and builders, but the fiduciary responsibilities that he, that would, that person would have, making sure that, that, that the invoices that come in, and all of that is reviewed and making sure. So, that's really, really important. And I think part of it was, and the quality of the work, you know, in Unity, that building did not meet standards. They literally stopped, dead stopped that project from being finished because of the quality of the project. And so, that's when this owners, like Jack described, when they, when the commissioner called for some legislation around this, this position.
Well, there, I realize that there's pressure from various groups to short-change construction and to make things so cheap that it doesn't serve the interests. And I think having an OPM would serve the interests of the district and the community is a wise choice. So, I think we're good. Anybody else on the OPM?
I'm just, you're okay, right? You're good?
No, we're good. Put out the RFP.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah. Yeah, I, I think you provided a, you know, a good amount of information, and we appreciate that.
And I'll put the same information into the board packet so that, that you, you'll, the, the full board would have, would have.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Please. The next item on the agenda is a Memorial Field update.
This is the song that never ends. It just goes on and on, my plans.
We have, both Barb and I are on the committee with, along with the city council with regards to looking at the Memorial Field project. Memorial Field project has, they've presented a few items with regards to conceptual design. However, no actual design work or scope has been completed yet. That would be the next step. The estimate on that would be a total of $1.5 million. I would assume that that means a 50/50 split between the city and us. The, the committee, last night, heard about, you know, some of the different items regarding the phases. At this point, the committee is discussing the definition of phases. I believe that the overall committee is feeling is, is that we need to address the drainage portion of that, that in the initial work to be done after, after design, of course, but, and Barb jumped in and Pam, because you both attended these, if I miss anything or misstate anything. The proposal has been to look at two turf fields. One, that would be a football field track, and another, that would be a multipurpose field. Both fields would be capable of hosting lacrosse and soccer, as well as, you know, football and field hockey. The positioning of those fields is something that is being discussed as to the optimal position. There is a big concern on, by the board on parking, on adequate parking, especially if we would be hosting events that would utilize both fields at the same time. There's also been some concern about not using and replacing the tennis courts that were most recently upgraded, and that it might be more frugal and wise to utilize those items where they are, but we're looking at design. So, the committee has asked Mr. Gill to go back to the, the folks who prepared the conceptual design and ask some questions with regards to the potential of moving some fields around and redefining phases. The last thing I'll say is that the committee is looking at, you know, the possibility, and right now, it is just a possibility of acquiring additional land from the state or a portion of some additional land from the state that butts or is adjacent to the, the current Memorial Field. It is critical because it's that portion that has the drainage. I guess it's, it's one of so many creeks that run under everything here in Concord. And, and so, we still have some work, but we'll be meeting again in approximately three or four weeks, and we'll be continuing our work on that.
Just to clarify.
Any, yeah, anything else?
The $1.5 million is for design, it's for permit, permitting, right?
Yes, it's all, it's all the things associated with prepping to, to construct. It would be the, all, everything up to, to the point where, you know, we're going to put the shovel on the ground.
So, you know, if you listened to the, you know, city and community relations meeting, I was a bit frustrated with what I felt like we've designed our new living room and someone comes in and redesigns the whole thing, and what are we doing now? But what I, what, what made sense to me and what clicked with me, listening to Mr. Foot talk, although I think he needs to go walk around Memorial Field a little bit more because a lot of the conceptual stuff, I don't think he can picture in his head. It makes sense that that area of the field, that area of the property is, is in horrible shape. And then, his idea to put the multipurpose field back there rather than move the tent, move things around also made sense. It was, it was less moving around the fields and less tearing down of existing structures and things like this. The key piece is, my concern was that we have to wait for some sort of state approval or land purchase to even begin the first phase, and we don't, actually. We have a piece of property that we can begin to assess and design, and we, you know, you can have it with or without that parking and that access. There's a couple of other things going on on that property as well, that we talked about, that where that building used to be. There's potential for an access road. So, even if there wasn't parking, potentially, accessing to the field from back there could provide flexibility as well.
And that's for safety reasons and medical reasons as well.
Yeah, and then, of course, while you're constructing it typically, and this was a good thought, if you have one parking lot that you're not going to redo right away and all your building materials are in the parking lot, now what do you do? You know, the whole place becomes unusable. The other piece was, and this was when it became clear that Mr. Foot did not understand multipurpose and track and all that. My question was, okay, if we're doing all this stuff down in the back corner of the property, but the track is part of that first, first phase of, you know, construction, is working on the track up here going to mess up the work down here? Is it going to, you know, because you're digging and all this kind of stuff? And he didn't understand that the track wasn't going to be down there as well. So, once we sort of explained to him, no, we have the multipurpose field, then we have the track, which will be reconfigured to a different shape to fit another multipurpose field in the middle, it was two separate things, it became, that became a bit more clear. So, long story short, we have miles to go before we sleep, but I don't feel quite as frustrated as, as I did before going into the meeting, because a lot of those questions make sense. But I do feel that we sit at a table with a lot of speculation, and maybe we should have a meeting at the field and walk around.
It's very, very early, and, you know, those of us who have been at the field at one point or other realize that in addition to the track, you need throwing areas, and you can't throw a javelin on a turf field. So, you need to, and those are all pieces. There is a softball field there, and those pieces that we need to real, we have a lot of work yet to see, you know, how they fit together and what the optimal thing to bring to the board and to the, to the city council is. But we are continuing to work on it, and we welcome all of your input, as well as public input as, as on the project.
And I, one of the questions that I think we had from the meeting, two meetings ago, was whether the design contract would cover looking at those various options.
Right. Well, you would have to to be a useful document.
Yes. Well, I, I agree, but there was some pushback on whether that, that would be the case. And I, I do think that, you know, concept is one thing, but when you're getting down to it, there has to be an ability for.
Well, that was my concern, like, okay.
So, so the designers, I guess, were not at last night's meeting?
No, they weren't. And we did charge Mr. Gill with getting those answers prior to the next meeting.
Right, right. We shall see.
That's great. I think the only other question that I have, and I don't even know how it is answerable at this point, but if there's any way that we can, if there seems to be an interest in going forward, how we can think about sequencing with the middle school.
It is a point of discussion at every meeting, yes.
Yeah, the timing.
Timing-wise, because it's, because the one thing that was brought up last night that is really, is we do not have enough fields. And, you know, we talked a little about some of the adjacent fields like Martin Park and so, and there isn't room, and they are fully committed. So, they're not really available. And they talked about using some runlet fields, and, you know, we said, those are fully committed and full too. So, it's a, that is an open question, because when we do construction of this, regardless of whether runlet is in play at that time or not, or being constructed, we will not have enough fields for our sports. And if runlet does overlap, I believe Barb brought this up, this is going to make a really critical shortage of fields in the, in the Concord area.
We provided Mr. Gill with a list, but it was really only focused on the middle school needs, right? And also, the high school, because the high school does use runlet, you know, for practices, lacrosse practice, football. You, you all know that. So, we, we gave him a very detailed of every single sport, mostly fall and, of course, spring, that we would need space during construction of the middle school. But we haven't really addressed the closure of the Memorial Field, and what does that mean.
And I assume our list doesn't include the other programs that use the runlet fields that aren't middles, that aren't middle schools.
Right, Little League and things like that, right.
All of those. And they all use, there are numerous groups, and we talked about this last night as well. Barb can tell.
If you drive by the school at night, you'll see them there.
There's a lot of other folks using that Memorial Field as well.
But we don't know that. We don't know that, because they don't use that field, and they don't go through us. They go through the recreation department. So, we're not aware of who might be out there.
Yeah. So, that is, that was a point that we discussed at length and is a concern for everybody on this subcommittee, so, more to come, more information.
Do we know that if, if the design funding, does it have to be included in the city's budget in June for, in order for them to move forward this year? Or do they have a little more, are they like us that have a little more flexibility for that type of programming?
They, we touched on that last night, and they seemed to think that, you know, if we move forward with the design funding, that they would be able to do that. And then, we discussed that, you know, we would be able to do that by ju, you know, we may may need to make some changes in our current budget, but we have that opportunity coming up, so. Mr. Dunn, anything else you're familiar with the work that was going on there? Do you have anything else you would like to add?
No, I think you captured it.
All right. Anybody have any questions that I may be able to answer? We'll see. And at any point, Madam President, if you want us to make a report to the full board, do you please let us know?
I will definitely.
The only other tidbit of information, and this would come along once construction, where to start? The track is weeks away from really being unusable, like probably next year, it can't be used in meets. Like, probably next year, it can't be used in meets, we'd be liable for injuries and such. So part of the initial outlay of money would include surface repair to the track, so that we don't lose the ability to use it while other things are happening, because that's the other piece of it, is not, the rest of the field, although it's wet, is usable. The softball fields aren't dangerous, the baseball fields work, you know, but the track won't very quickly. So that was a bit of discussion as well, because it's a chunk of money that you're using to Band-Aid something that you're then going to dig up a year later. But in looking at the number of people that use it and the logistics of not having it would be, I mean, you have, that'd be like 250 kids every day after school without a place to go between middle school and high school.
I think we have to know the cost of the Band-Aid, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's like $400,000.
About that, and we did discuss that, as, you know, Barb's correct. Our current track is in need of significant repair today, right now. You walk down to the track right now, and it is, you know, less, far less than ideal. But we talked about that, the repair to the track. We also, you know, it's not that we just were looking to spend money or anything, we also considered and we are considering other options with regards to other school facilities of other school districts that are nearby.
Well, that will happen for meets, I think, anyway, yeah.
But, you know, we're looking into that, but we just, Barb's correct, we have to bring it up, and the fact that, you know, regardless of this project, at some point we need to address that, and if we do move forward in the project, we need to incorporate addressing that as part of our...
Right, the bigger picture.
Our plan, our big picture, because it's not going away.
Yeah, right.
And to that effect, you know, lights for football are also going to have to be addressed in the interim, so.
Good, thank you, Barb. That was right, I almost forgot.
No, that's all right.
Any other questions? All right. Does anyone, that is the end of my agenda, does anyone else have any further business for this committee?
I just, how we're going with the plans for the HVAC replacement at the high school this summer.
Things are going really well. We started about two months ago with a second shift operation. We probably have close to 20 outside contractors that are working in the school. We are making great progress with all the pre-wiring that is just waiting to have, over the summer, we have crane work that will take off the old HVAC and swing on the new. We've had various meetings with the city and emergency support services to plan out when approximately we're going to use the cranes when the work is happening, also with the sinkhole project, just keeping the city, everybody informed of what we're doing. It won't have that much of an impact on the city surrounding roads, but still want to let them know anyway, and we have. Overall, it's tracking very well. We're able to get in, and we're going to do a more overview on Monday for the school board meeting. But so far, so good, and I think it's, we've put the pressure on early. We've set milestones that have been met and exceeded in a lot of cases, and I think we're looking really good. But all that said, we're watching.
And all the equipment we need is in and available and...
It is, there, I was alerted today.
Nothing's on a container ship with 145% tire.
Well, I was, I was alerted today, there's a new refrigerant that's used in the cooling dehumidification process, and there are some delays, but they haven't exactly hit. Train has a lot of pull in a lot of areas, so, good thing is, I had heard that that could be an issue with other projects. It was, it brought to my attention today, but I think there's still enough time to be able to defeat those and get everything in on time. But I'll keep everyone posted, and you can believe we're overly on top of that project.
And no other things that would delay the, delay the project? Because I know that this is coordinated with all of the programs that go on, because school doesn't end in the summer. Use of the high school certainly doesn't end in the summer. We are much more of a year-round entity these days than we were 20 years ago. Are we good with integrating those with the other programs in this construction?
We are.
They're going to move to different locations to provide, especially the extended school year programs. I mean, those have to go on, so they're moving those, they'll be over at runlet. And they moved, you know, one of the very popular programs is the, called a boot camp for eighth graders, right? Where the kids really spend time with the teachers and some of the older students at the high school, so they've worked those schedules out. Tim will be at the board meeting on the May 5th, I believe, that Monday. We came, come back from April vacation, and both Matt and Tim will have a presentation for the board, addressing the programs. Matt, of course, will be talking about the timeline and the schedules and the shipments and all the, all the good stuff.
Yeah, good, that's what I was actually kind of referring to, because while we can move some things to another building, it's a little tough to do your orientation bootcamp for the high school at a different building.
Yeah, so they're moving it early, right? They're doing it early on.
They are doing it early on. I do want to point out, and I'll bring it up at the meeting on Monday, when I tell you the second shift, and we've brought these contractors in and they're doing all this work, we also, we have been meeting weekly for over a year. We've had CSI engineering doing all the electrical, mechanical, structural, planning and design work, we've submitted to the fire marshal, got total approval, submitted to the city, have total approval. So there's, you know, I'm just telling you a quick and dirty snapshot, but I also want to say, this has been, in the year, past year, very heavy concentration on the planning for this and the design work, so.
And I appreciate that, and I want to assure that any parents that are listening in or reading our minutes, that the security and the safety of our students and teachers has always been paramount, and the planning is taking that into account as, you know, item number one.
Absolutely.
And I know, I just want to reassure everybody, because they're asking if there's construction going on at second shift and doing that, so it's the first question that a parent comes in, is that what impact does that have on safety and security? And I appreciate the amount of time and effort that you've put in to assure that all of our students are attending classes, not missing anything, and doing it in a safe and secure way, so, thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second by Ms. Mouchet? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn, thank you, everyone.